So, I'm gonna call our regular select board meeting to order. First thing is set adjust agenda. Do we have anything to take off?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Yay!
Strike item number two for the agenda and move the others off accordingly.
Okay.
Strike item two?
Two.
Thank you.
Is it in temporary or is it still gonna happen?
Yeah, we'll adjust it in another meeting.
Okay.
Fine.
Fair enough. Anything else? Motion to...
Motion to accept a amended agenda.
Second.
Second.
Oh, a race to the second?
She won.
All in favor who say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Jerry, are you aye or nay?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Okay, so that's everybody, good. Next, communication from the audience, and we have an audience tonight, which is a wonderful thing, so... Anybody wanna say anything, communicate anything to us that's not on our agenda tonight?
Yeah.
So, is there anything, is there anyone else here besides a community safety, are there community safety group?
What is that? For the agenda budget?
Norma's on the agenda for Hardwick Trails. When we get to budget.
So, we just wanted to share, many of you already know that they've been having a community safety discussion for the last...
Oh, could you state your name, Jan?
My name's Jan Mueller. And, so some of you do know, and some of you have been nice enough to come to one of our meetings. So, there's been a few meetings, and we'd just like to share a little bit, nothing, we can maybe take up, take something up more formal in a future meeting, but given that we had a pretty important meeting this last week, we just thought we could do a little update, so...
Yeah, so the...
Could you state your name, Kate?
Kate Scarlett.
Thank you.
So, there was an original meeting in August, which was organized because of what appeared to be a really serious escalation in drug-related crimes in the community. And so, the, you know, the focus of that meeting and all the subsequent meetings is on trying to define specific problems and concerns and issues that people have to better understand what's going on. The focus is, and the, our meeting is on giving individuals room to speak and share their stories and questions and concerns to, that is intended to help us to, as individuals and as a community, to better understand and know each other. So, so that we can then build ideas for helping each other. We need to listen, to understand, and from understanding, we can then move to ideas for actively helping each other. The intention of the group is, is for a democratic process, which can mean it's messy and time-consuming at times. Obviously, the problems of drugs and crime are obviously not, it's not just a local issue. It's a societal issue, it's a nationwide issue, it's a worldwide problem, so there are no easy answers. But, I think the intent of the group is to really focus on listening, to give people room where they feel, yeah, a safe and respectful place to be able to express their concerns, and that is probably a growing, evolving process as people understand that that's what is actually happening in these meetings, and that that's a priority for the effort. And coming up with solutions, if we can come up with a solution, we'll probably start to solve the world's problems. So, big, big problem. And I do wanna say that we really appreciate that OP has been there at every meeting, the police chief has been, we're close to every meeting, the police chief is coming to the meetings, select board members really, really appreciate that and hope that we can continue that 'cause it's a, it creates a really important, helpful dialogue.
May I make a request that at some point, somebody write this up and put it in the Gazette? The Gazette is not the paper that it used to be, but I am part of a group that is trying to bring it back to a semblance of what it used to be, a place where you go to find out what's going on in the community as opposed to the silos of Facebook and various social media that, that everybody is connected with. This sounds like it's really important stuff that's going on, but unless you're there, you don't know about it. So, if somebody or some committee could agree to, you know, once a month summarize the stuff that came out of this, I think it would be enormously beneficial.
Thanks, I appreciate that, 'cause that's something actually we talked about is how do we get this out there so people understand these are happening?
And the Gazette is still, is still Hardwick's, I mean, for official notices, it is no longer our document of record, our newspaper of record, but for community stuff, it really is the historical record, and, and that's part of what I'm thinking of also. Thank you.
On that, on that note, Tuesday morning, I contacted the News and Citizen, and they're working on a solution to get East Hardwick added to the distribution.
Great.
Which is a huge problem. I found out that they deliver to Greensboro and Greensboro Bend, and they, East Hardwick is the only zip code they're not delivering to.
So, they drive right through East Hardwick?
Yeah. So, we're working, we're working on that.
Yeah, they got it somehow.
Yeah, we're working.
I, I'm well aware that you guys are worth it.
Is there a reason to do this, or just somebody?
I'm waiting for a, it was a problem, I heard that, and that's, that's a big issue.
Yeah.
'Cause that's our paper of record.
Right.
Yeah. That is the paper of record.
So, yeah.
So, we're gonna each say something, just, you know, time-wise, I don't know how much time we have.
Let's carry on.
You have as long as you need.
Whoa!
Oh, sorry, you're the chair.
Yeah, thank you.
We're concise, but we have different perspectives.
Yep.
And, and the value of this group.
Okay, so, I think I'm a little bit late.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so we've been...
Caitlin, can you state your name?
Oh, sorry, Caitlin Strong, East Hardwick. And, so, I had started a neighborhood watch group like over three years ago, and so that's sort of a little bit morphing into this group, whether everybody knows it or not, just because there, it doesn't seem like we need to replicate. So, yeah, we've been working really hard on trying to cultivate an environment where people can really talk about these things that are pretty nerve-wracking, and also focusing on looking, examining very locally, like what circumstances have allowed this to happen in our community to get to this point. And, and then we've also, we have some, you know, focus on county and state sort of levels as well. But, very specifically on the local level, we just discussed coming up with a resolution to present a town meeting, really recommitting to community safety and what, what, you know, maybe trying to define what that means. And, since there are challenges on the county and state level of how these cases are tried or not, it seems like we sort of need to reestablish what the community feels about safety, so that's my piece.
Great, thank you.
Do you want to come in, Caitlin?
No, thank you.
Okay. So, my name's Jan Mueller again, and I'll tell you, this meeting on Monday, even though I've been working with people in our group and hearing everyone's individual stories, on Monday, it was, it was pretty powerful to me personally, because I have not had personal experiences with safety issues in Hardwick personally. And I'm learning about what's happening to my neighbors, and I'm like, my god. But I was teaching in Memorial County before that, and that's kind of was my interest in this issue, was seeing how it was affecting some of the families of kids I was working with every day. So, so we have people who are interested in like trying to deal with addiction broadly, and long-term prevention and all those other things, and we have people who are trying, and we also have a fire, you know, right now, that people need help with. So, we're trying to balance that near-term, long-term, specific hotspots versus overall, like get a handle on the fire. So, so we hope to share more of what we're learning with you in the future.
Great. Well, thank you, appreciate you coming and offering just a synopsis of what you've been up to, and I think it's helpful. Caitlin?
In terms of the resolution for town meeting, do we have to go through the whole, like, getting signature process? Or how does that, so we... For what? For creating a resolution to be presented at town meetings, to have people vote on, what's the process?
An item on the warning?
I think the select board has to decide on a resolution. I don't know.
I think, I think there are two ways you can get something on the warning.
It's, it's, 'cause it's different for different things.
Right, and what you're trying to do.
I'll email you tomorrow.
Okay.
And there's always, at the end, isn't there always a place for non-binding business?
Right, a non-binding resolution to 2000.
That would be a non-binding resolution.
It would, I'm just saying that that's a possibility.
That's basically the voice of the community.
Yeah.
Can I tell her real quickly, to go, that, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
She wants to jump in.
Are you just, I was just, this is Kayla, Caitlin, I was just thinking that, so, a few years ago,
the select board put into place the Equity and Inclusion Resolution, which I think touches on a lot of safety and making everyone feel welcome and safe in the community. So, I know Jan has that, and I'll send it to you, that, you know, has already been voted on by the board, and it's possible that that might capture a lot of what you're talking about, and if it needs to be opened up to add more information, we could always do that, but it might, it might really fit with what you're looking for.
Oops, you cut out.
She's muted herself.
Oh, you muted yourself, Kayla. I'm glad we did it.
Yeah, I was done.
You're done, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Just an abrupt finish.
Thank you.
All right.
We'll come back to you later.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, you're welcome to stay, we'll be here for the next couple hours. Everybody thinks I'm joking.
Right.
Yeah. As they leave.
Get a feel of what it's like.
Dinner.
Dinner. Chinese.
Thanks, so we can have a nice hand close-up.
All right, awesome, so that's good to hear from people.
They can motion that approve the minutes of the regular select board meeting on November 16th, 2000.
Second.
Twenty-three.
Any discussion about the minutes, I thought they were very good?
Outstanding.
All in favor of approving minutes as written, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Wrap it up.
I was staying, I wasn't there.
Okay, so that's four ayes, abstentions, so motion carries. Next is town manager, oh, yeah, town manager report given by Mr. Upton.
Okay, so, I, this is my favorite topic, and it's coming to a close, so I won't be able to talk about it much anymore, but PNH Senesac processed a total of 1.6 million gallons of sludge in the Lagoon One Cleanout. Their recent efforts closed out the cost of cleaning out both lagoons to just over 1.3 million dollars.
Wow.
2.5 million gallons of sludge processed and over 2,300 tons of solids shipped.
That's hard too, that's hard to get my head around.
That's a lot of solids. That's 40 years' worth of...
That's 40 years, I think, that question?
That's a historical record right there, it is.
I'm writing it down.
No, 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 in the actual biomass, that would have been a historical record.
We should have been doing core samples.
Correct.
The Lagoon Cleanout portion of the project ended $122,500, $154 over budget. The main drivers of the overrun were lack of available disposal facilities in Vermont, and the clampdown of PFOA regulations in Quebec, leading to an increased, increased trucking and disposal fees.
Where did it fund like?
Western New York.
Let's put it...
That's far.
Yeah, and a little bit up in Quebec right at the end of the project. So, that's it, that's that project in a nutshell, just for the lagoon, what, relining, there's still stuff going on in the plan. The, the relining, they're starting to chuck the sand out of the lagoon, number one, you'll see it, starting the stockpile. And then they're going to, they're not gonna, they're gonna prepare it, but they're not gonna lay the new liner in until the spring, 'cause of the weather, they can't do it, they can't weld it. The fire station boiler is installed and operational, just in time.
Wait, I wasn't, somehow wasn't tracking that, did that get damage in the flood?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, this kind of segues into my next thing, the BLCT has provided a $50,000 cash advance on our two property claims within the floodplain, the fire department and the wastewater treatment facility. The final payout will not be determined until all losses from floodplain properties statewide are collected. We have closed out the Memorial Building claim, and the Historical Society claim is closed, pending quotes for a new heating system. So, we had a furnace down there that we fixed temporarily until we can get a new heating system in there.
In the Historical Society?
In the Historical Society.
And then Memorial Building, sorry, you also closed that out?
We closed that one out, that was the floor.
And these are both with passive?
Yeah.
The, the, okay.
Yeah. The Historical Society and Memorial Building are not in the floodplain, so those are paid.
Covered like normal insurance claim?
Covered like normal insurance, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we need to get our fire department out of the floodplain.
Yeah.
Anyway.
The preliminary architectural feasibility report, the PAFR and State Historic Preservation Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, documents are reaching the final drafts, these are important documents required that are needed to be completed prior to moving forward with the construction of the pedestrian bridge. They will be submitted in the next couple days for final approval by the USDA. I'm attending the fifth, oh, I'm just gonna skip over that, I attended the fifth public safety meeting that the citizen group has organized, this is the third meeting I've attended, they are working to help the police department in the community to come up with strategies to combat current drug-related crimes that have been happening in Hardwick Village and East Hardwick Village, and all the rest of the world. All in all, these meetings are positive and productive. Our community development coordinator is putting the final touches, I think she did this by the end of the day, on the Transfication Alternatives Program grant for the requested scoping study work on Mill Street and South Main Street to address ongoing safety concerns surrounding bike and pedestrian use on the street, thank you Tracy. She had Chief Henry here pull the data for the crashes on that street for the last 10 years, and I think there were 25 crashes.
Really?
Yeah, it's a lot.
Yeah, for, for us, 'cause we don't have a lot of crashes.
And then there were, how many injury-related crashes?
I don't know how many, I don't know the breakdown, but those are just the reportable, reportable crashes. So, I didn't pull the numbers for the non-reportable.
Like fender benders?
Yeah.
Wow, that's way more than I would have guessed, for 10 years.
We're kind of four bike people, yeah.
Yeah, and there's that area.
Right there we have.
Where are we talking about?
Mill Street.
Mill Street.
Yeah, Mill Street, Main Street.
Yeah, that intersection, the South Main Street intersection, and then the one coming off of Glenside is another bad.
It is, yeah.
Yeah, so hopefully that stuff gets figured out.
It'd be great to have some ideas, anyway.
Yeah.
I mean, there's been, yeah, I mean, there's been lots, lots of accidents.
Jeff Perry told me that at one point, we had an opportunity to buy that house, the, the last house on, on, coming off of Glenside, and the town passed on it to level that hill so you could see around the corner.
Right, so you could at least see the road.
Yeah.
There used to be a schoolhouse there.
Really?
Yeah, it seems like we're a strange place to put a schoolhouse, but there was.
So, that's my manager's report?
Thank you.
For this.
My job.
Yeah. You can't ask me any questions unrelated to the manager's report, I'm just kidding. What's up?
I know there was a, there was a light out, and Casey, they were gonna get a new light because it was out, and it must have been, it wasn't available, 'cause...
We have to replace that whole thing on top.
Well, I...
So, we did find a vendor.
HED does that, and there's...
No.
Not those ones.
Oh, the black ones?
Yeah.
The little ones, yeah, okay.
So, yes, um...
I was on vacation.
He had to go like meet them electric in Morrisville, and they, and I'm sure it has to be ordered, so it's, it's been ordered.
I saw that they took the thing off the top.
And I told him to get two, because we should have spare, but then I realized that, I think there's actually two out, there's the one by positive high, and the one that got hit on the corner, so we need them both anyway.
Maybe that's why it started.
Yeah, so, they've been ordered.
I just thought it would be worth mentioning in case somebody actually listens to, you know, meaning.
And they're not, they're not on any sound either.
We know their lights are out, yeah.
I haven't gotten any calls about, you are the only one.
Well, Sammy, yeah, Sammy is...
Hey, please see.
All right. Next up, Mike Henry with, I feel like we're skipping over, uh, road, yeah?
Tom, I said, red report.
Tom's got the night off.
I know, just...
Is it, I do have one more question regarding that, so, the winter parking ban is in force now, right?
Full force.
So...
Lockdown.
Why, I suppose they weren't able to plow the whole, you know, in front of the school and all the way downtown, but really in front of the school, the, all those spots only got half plowed, so you can't see where the lines are? So, people are going all helter-skelter up there again.
Yeah, they did one, I know they did one night of snow clearing, and if they push, if they do it during the day, then all the snow, they can't get the snow out of there before the cars start. And then this, the Monday storm was, it got cold and everything froze up.
So, now it's all...
Yeah, we're not supposed to be really getting any snow.
It's gonna melt.
It's all gonna melt.
Hopefully.
Sunday.
Sunday.
Did you ever notice it in the flood?
Yeah.
Oh, when the flood?
Red ring.
Yeah, it's spring, spring.
Oh, don't say that.
Yeah, we'll take care of it.
Mud shoes and...
It's a pet peeve of mine to have any snow between the sidewalk and park car.
Mine too.
So...
Yeah, that's a whole other thing, I mean, this was just like only half of it, yeah, there was a whole section.
They don't have a plow with a wing right now.
Oh.
Tom's truck is...
Grader were just fine, I see them winging back both the street sidewalk.
With a grader?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Awesome.
But yeah, Richard, Richard Brochu, that was a, a huge pet peeve of his, so I've carried on that, that tradition.
Me and Richard don't like that.
I don't like that.
Somebody told me there were something like 70 trucks down to one of the dealerships, that's right now, it's like...
That Clark's?
Yeah, my son-in-law was somewhere, my son-in-law was somewhere today where the town has got two big trucks down, their, their 10-wheelers are down, and they're plowing with F-250s for their 10-wheeler routes, because trucks are down and they can't get cars, it's a nightmare, it's a nightmare.
'Cause normally, they would get that work done in the summer, and they were using them all summer.
Yeah.
Right, right, that's right.
The light depart, the, they said on the news last night that the light trucks, the big light trucks, the big ones like your Mountain Power big light trucks, are like two and a half, they're like five years out when you buy one.
Yeah.
They paid for it two years ago, and they're not gonna get it until next year.
Wow.
That's...
A hotline truck.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Mike or, Mike ordered one.
It's stuff that right now is just crazy, crazy, crazy.
Yeah, it's crazy.
Anyway.
Anyway, next, police department report, Mr. Henry.
I'll start with the bad and get to the good.
Okay.
Hey!
So, we lost Bill Morley, I don't know, I missed a meeting back, Bill has been out most of the summer, anyway. He got injured at home, and after that, he decided that it was time to hang it up, took him a long time to heal. So, appreciate his services he gave us, it was great having him, but we lost him, he was one of our part-timers. Andrew Force will be leaving us in January, so he's one of our full-timers, Andrew's been with us almost two years, and he's got a job with, through the feds, so he'll be starting in January with them.
So, good for him.
Good for him, bad for us.
Well...
So, we're, we've been advertising, like, Casey?
Nope, nobody's given me an ad, they're told me to advertise.
Oh, I thought we had one up.
I thought we had one up.
We have, we still, we have two ads up.
I didn't.
We haven't, we haven't advertised in the paper yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
So... I thought they were...
So, we will be advertising.
I didn't believe you.
In the morning, first thing, there will be advertising.
I didn't believe you.
So, is there...
Now it's public record.
Is there also a, like a statewide, or some sort of law enforcement board, employment board where people look to? And we post to?
But you're not, but we're, but we're not, Stowe's a $15,000 sign-on bonus, I think.
They, they advertise in the Gazette.
And they advertise everywhere.
Including the Gazette.
All over the world, Woodright Way, so, they're here, and we're down here, like, you get biscuits, you know, gravy here.
Steak and eggs.
So, I, I would like, exactly, thank you, we have a nice community to work in, we have a really good chief, we have a good town manager.
It's silly.
It's a good...
It's silly right now, again, we're back to the silly world we're in.
But, we, we had decided, I thought, a while ago, that we were not gonna play the game of the signing bonuses. Just because it seems like something...
We know it's hard to retain people.
Yeah, but signing bonuses don't retain people.
No, they don't.
Yeah. That's the problem, you get somebody in the door for the bonus, and as soon as they're gone.
They do, incentives are, are what are taking people away, I mean, even with Andrew, obviously, there was a good opportunity for him for his career, right?
Right.
You can't, that's, that's just the way, then those things happen.
And that should happen.
When you have very limited supply of people coming in...
Yeah, no, it's hard, for sure.
So, we're looking for good candidates, I need to get somebody, hey, if there's a new person that has no training, I have to get them up and running, you know, before January, because the academy would start in February, and there's a lot that has to be done before that.
Mike, what's a good candidate? What do you look for?
Give me somebody with integrity, and, you know, we, we can, we can mold them.
Good writing skills.
Good writing skills would be a plus, yeah, yeah.
Plenty of pluses, but there's somebody that...
Yeah.
And shows up.
I mean...
Well, I'm pretty sure there's three of them over in two of the counties, they're gonna be chub hunting. I would overlook something like that, have them on board, the speedster's injured, some three, three guys.
You're the one who's trying to keep us on task here.
I know, these are good stories!
There was two police officers and a firefighter.
Yeah, two police officers and a firefighter, 30-year-old was under motorcycles, decided they shouldn't stop, yeah.
Oh.
And they got caught, yeah, so they're...
Let's not throw them under the bus.
No, I'm, that's why I said, let's hire them, let's hire them, I'd overlook that. In the old days, Mike Luzon wouldn't even, Mike Luzon wouldn't even have raised an eyebrow, he said, boys, go back to work.
Danny, you're on fire tonight.
I wanna go home. I'm not having my own coffee. I'm tired, I'm sorry.
Mike, please carry on.
Give him a cookie, put a cookie.
I had two cookies, that truck got me jacked up, all cookie'd up.
Oh, boy. So, that's what we need, we really need to try and look for people, if anybody's got any people that they can send my way, if we can get somebody certified, even better, but it's slim pickings right now.
Yeah.
So...
Everywhere, right?
Everywhere.
Yeah.
So, I just wanna touch on some of the other stuff that's been going on, I'm sure, you know, you guys have seen it, but what we've been doing is working along with Morristown Police Department, Stowe Police Department, Sheriff's Department, DEA, and other agencies as well, because we're just too small to do things on our own. So, last night was an example, one of the nights where we just went out and targeted certain people and picked them off. So, just bringing people in on overtime, just that force multiplier of getting everybody together, and these are the people, because the same people over here are doing the same stuff over in Morristown, over in Stowe, you know, all over. So, we're just picking people, and those people that we took off last night, we, we took off four more, so it was a, it was a good night last night.
And that's in cooperation with which agencies?
That's, so last night, it was state, state police, I forgot to mention, state police and Morristown Police Department, we all worked together, had a pretty productive night.
Great.
So, that's what we're gonna have to do, it's, as you're hearing from the people who are in the audience tonight, a lot of people are scared to be out there, with all the drug problems that are going on, we're doing the best we can to take them off at this point, and that's one of the ways we're doing it.
It sounds like working in cooperation with other agencies is really a smart way to go about it, because people aren't just operating in Hardwick or Morristown or Stowe, right, they're moving around.
Right, right.
Everybody wins.
Well, you mean when they're taken, yeah?
Not the bad enough.
I mean, all the communities win when you get together and, and grab a bad actor and get it off the street.
Right, and we're, you know, our communities are small, and you almost have to... See, I agree, it's the same guys that are, are, Memorial County, or Canada City County.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, that's great.
That's about it, we have worked on parking, when we have time, try to get people down there, that's been, had a few people who were low on air, so... So, but we're mainly focused on, you know, the handicap zone and the area right in front of the.
Intersection?
The intersection. So, um, that's our main focus.
Good job.
And some people that are happy to pay the ticket.
Some people have come down, you know, and said, yep, you got me.
Yeah, you did drive it at the time.
Yeah.
Good for them. Did you ever solve the question of which direction the sign is supposed to face?
Which one, the handicapped one?
The handicapped.
Not, not really. Um, because there, there's, two, two people are saying completely something different. So, I haven't had time to.
Cause now that the snow's covering the ground, then they can't see, they, yeah. So you pull up there, you don't really see that if you're in your, in the driver's seat.
The engineer says it's, it's supposed to be that way.
Yeah.
And the judge says.
The judge says, well, the judge's ruling.
It's never that way in the past. That's changed.
And the judge's ruling, he, he had it facing the sidewalk.
So, I don't, I think, I understood the judge's ruling.
You guys can discuss this amongst yourselves later.
You notice, I gotta be honest with you. I'm much more entertaining than those guys.
Yes, you are. But is that why we're here?
Yeah, right. Just great work though on working with other agencies and, and helping to, to take some, some folks away who we don't need what they're doing going on in our, in our community. So, that's really good. Appreciate it. Um, next, where are we? Item one. Town clerk slash treasurer, Tanya Chase is here to discuss the vault door. Thank you for coming to discuss the vault door.
You're welcome.
And thank you for paying attention to the last meeting.
Thank you for, Casey, that would be too. Um, so, I don't know if any of you have been in that vault down there. I'd be happy to show it to you.
Wonderful.
It's daunting that when you open that door. Um, it's so full. There's like this much foot space. The rest of it, which is a pretty large vault, is just boxes upon boxes of stuff. Through the years, it's become completely unorganized. So, Alberta and I are going to, we've started on Monday. We close at three-thirty now. And from three-thirty to four-thirty, we'll be cleaning and organizing uninterrupted.
The vault.
Huh?
The vault.
The vault. Um, so we're gonna organize it because different things are all over and then catalog it. Go through the retention schedule and, um, Secretary of State's office, the archives, they're gonna help me with that. And then what we don't have to keep, Wiz will come and see what she wants.
At first, at first option.
So hopefully, you know, eight, nine hours a week between the two of us working on that, couple months, hopefully. Um.
Do you have shelves in there?
There are three, so three of the walls are all shelves.
Wow.
Really nice.
But it's full?
It, yeah.
Maybe it's full.
It was full thirty years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
And it's just been added to and it's just, to sit down and do it is very, I think that's why it never got done really is, it's just a daunting task.
Right.
So, we are doing that. Um, I got a door picked out, emailed a few places to get prices. One, they don't have anything similar. One, it's about eighty-six hundred now. It's the smallest door. It's thirty-two inches. That door, we measured, I think it was twenty-eight, twenty-eight and three-quarters is the case. So hopefully there would be much cement cutting. Emailed Vermont Concrete and Cutting, that's who John got a quote from in twenty-eighteen. To get a quote, I haven't heard back from them. Then we do that and then find somebody to put it in.
And is that a fire-safe door that means?
Four hours, which is the minimum it has to be is four hours.
Okay.
So, that's what this door is. Yeah. That's where it is right now.
I don't think the current door is a fire door.
No, it's not. No, it's just one.
Every episode, or every edition of the Gazette since the beginning is in there.
I thought Wiz had them.
That's not true. That's not true. But that is an intriguing pile, isn't it?
There's a lot of them. He was climbing up, we went in there, we were measuring stuff and in the top corner of one of the shelves and it's up high, there's a stack of something. They're huge. I've always wondered what they were, so we climbed up there and pulled them down and they're old gazettes.
They're old gazettes.
The top one was forties and you didn't go down very far, so if they get older.
Are you missing any?
Um.
They'll be hers.
Very, very few, but I wanna see them. They are, it's.
Yeah, we won't throw anything out till.
But that pile was there in nineteen eighty when I was researching in the vault.
Oh, my.
Yeah, and it was yellowing then.
Yeah.
So, I have a question. Do you have a secure place over there that's fireproof?
Yes.
You do?
We do.
Okay.
An angel room. You should see it.
They're a nice vault.
Okay.
It's amazing.
Oh, you should.
Oh, come on.
You should go, when did he?
Do you need a tour of the other store?
I had one tour, but I don't remember seeing the vault there as much.
Cause you don't get to see it first time, you go.
Oh, okay.
And it al- it also doesn't look like a vault, like the vaults here.
Yeah, it's not a vault per se. It's, it's a secure, climate-controlled storage.
You started it.
I know, I got too cash. Good job.
All right. Thank you, Tanya.
You're welcome.
Appreciate the report and it would be, yeah, it would be great to get a door in there.
So if anybody knows of somebody who puts in vault doors when the time comes, that's the only thing I don't really know who.
I think Danny does it.
Oh, no, perfect. It's bottom floor, so this one only weighs nine hundred pounds.
Yeah, no, I think it's.
It's the lightest one I could find.
I do, it's like six hundred, no, under. I don't know, it's, uh, yeah, that's not, it's not gonna be your average. You're gonna wanna get somebody who knows what to do it.
Ideally.
Literally, cause it's.
I assume once they hear vacuum from concrete, they might know.
They might, yeah, that would be a good place to ask, sure. Awesome, thank you.
I really have more expertise than dynamiting mounts.
Oh, geez. All right, item three, business manager, does not say Casey Rowell. Casey Rowell to present the FY twenty-five budget, first drafts of Trails presented by Normine Helen. Office and payroll and revenue slash summary. So, that's to you, Casey.
We'll start with, um, I just gotta get this up on the screen.
Ooh, look at that. Nice indeed.
So everybody has these, right?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
So.
So to be, but before she starts, to be fair, um, in the current fiscal year, twenty-twenty-four, um, there was an issue with a formula in the budget report. And so what happened was Trails submitted a budget and fiscal year twenty-four was about ten thousand, three hundred dollars. However, um, their budget flows over to line items and what happened was it didn't, it didn't jive. So, they basically got shorted by twelve hundred dollars. Um, and so, when it look, when it shows it's going up nineteen hundred dollars, it's actually really only going up like seven hundred dollars, um, and twenty percent, but you can talk about that. So it just, it looks like a bigger jump and it also looks like that because it's a small, it's a small budget. Um, but really, they had requested ten-three, that was the intention, but it came over as a ninety-one eighty-five, so.
That might have been when I was playing with the, the formulas.
Yes.
Last year.
Might have been. So what you're saying is, is, yeah, it's only a thousand dollars.
Yeah, I mean, really, yeah, it's really like seven, a seven hundred dollar increase, but we need to give them back the money that they sort of lost last year in the budget or the current year.
And last year we spent almost every cent of what we budgeted.
Yeah, we were at ninety-nine percent. It was like perfect.
Yeah, so, um, so it's basically, the only thing, the big, the two biggest increases, equipment, repair and maintenance. We have an old tractor. Eric can probably answer questions about that, but it's needed a lot of repair and maintenance. Um, a salary increase, and I think that's where the, the cut was mostly, wasn't it, Casey?
Yeah, that's, I had made adjustments, so we trimmed that down a little.
So, last year, um, for this year's budget, and then, um, the program and activities was another, uh, jump. And that's because we, every year we're overweight over spending a budget in programs and activities.
Which is a good thing because we're doing a lot more programming and activities and so I think it's, uh.
And the cost for like the pumpkins and, and the supplies for those events has increased, so it makes sense to increase that.
Right, right. Um, so, are there any questions about anything?
It's pretty modest, so.
Well, everybody's shaking their heads, no questions. Kaylee, you have any questions on the Trails budget?
I don't, it looks good to me.
Thank you for coming right in here though, just like Johnny on the jingle with that.
I have a couple of questions.
You know, somebody would like that, visit.
Are, are there repairs that still need to be made from the flood that are?
Eric might be able to answer that.
That won't be covered?
No, I think.
Hey, who do I send a bill to, by the way?
Have you not sent a bill?
No.
So you sent a bill to Casey?
The deadline's passed.
That's right.
Oh, yeah, the deadline's passed.
If that was flood repair, there was the twenty-five hundred dollar grant from Vermont Community Foundation for flood work to Trails.
Yeah.
That you have.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that was, that was for flood repair, so.
Okay, so you'll be able to use that.
I, I'd print all that, that's fine.
You need a bill for that.
No.
Yeah?
I'll do it next time. I'll bill.
No, you need a bill for it.
Okay, okay.
You did, you did a great repair. So, um, we also, uh, replaced, I think, six culverts and some other washout stuff. But we were able to get, yeah, the Vermont Community Foundation grant and we had some money remaining on a grant from the Northern Forest Center that really was, needed to be closed out in September and so we were able to use that.
We spent a lot of time out there.
And we had a donation.
Eighty hours?
Aspirator.
Yeah, we had, we had good donations for the excavator work, so, um, we.
That was about twenty-six hundred dollars worth of work.
He was out there a long time, so it didn't cost you a justice, so.
Right, so you saw, yeah. So we had eighty hours of excavator time, of which we were only billed for fifty hours. And there were a corresponding eighty hours of operator time that was picked up by the Craftsbury Outdoor Center, um, for, cause it's an employee there.
I did not write the thank you note for the operator part.
We need to do that. I forgot, sorry.
Okay.
So, so, our, our money went a really long way with the donations and whatever, so, and grants.
Cool. So.
If, I have a question for you. Is, is, are we still on the FEMA potential eligibility for reimbursement of some of those costs? As an identified damaged site in the many different projects that were noted as incurred damage and potentially reimbursable?
I'd have to follow up with Brad from FEMA on that. I don't know if that was added to the disaster inventory, the Trails Network.
I think it was.
I thought you mentioned the time it was, which would be wonderful. So they'll get reimbursement on that.
I think I, yeah, I think it is.
I think it's.
Because I remember submitting the.
Did they do anything right now?
No, but I did, yeah, cause I submitted the latitude and longitude coordinates for that first river crossing. I added those. So I, it's been added.
Great.
Whether it's been put into a project yet or not, I don't know. I'd have to follow up.
Right by the school, though?
Yeah.
And when would that, when are those decisions being made? Is this?
It's just ongoing.
Okay.
They're just, they're, the projects are popping up and then we have to do essential elements of information, which I'm behind on. So, yeah.
Yeah, that, that would be, we'll wait.
Where I think are the first ones we're doing, we're just going in order and it's just the debris, all the trash and stuff, those reimbursements.
Awesome. Thanks so much for coming.
You're welcome. Thank you for supporting us.
And I don't, but I don't know if, if we've spent grant money for the repairs.
Right.
If we're gonna be able to get, um, reimbursement for that.
Right, right. Might not be able to, right.
No, I, well, I, yeah, I don't know. Did they ask you how you paid for it?
They, yeah. We had to go out with a yardstick and measure all the.
Yeah, yeah. But they asked you, they asked you if there's a pay, unpaid balance or if you paid it, they wanna know where the money came from.
Yeah.
For this exactly.
Right.
All right, Casey, back to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, all right, so the next category we're gonna talk about this evening is office and other payroll. Um, so basically, um, the biggest changes here come from salaries and benefits. Um, we have, we're still working to gradually bring up salaries that are significantly below the market average. It's gonna take some time. We can't do it all at once, but doing it over two or three years, although they keep going up, but we're, we're working on that. So, um, we're also proposing that, um, the part-time zoning administrator increase her hours to thirty-five hours a week, which will make her eligible for benefits.
So from thirty-five, two thirty-five, but from?
Twenty, twenty. She's half-time and not going all the way to forty, but going to thirty-five, um, which will make her eligible for benefits. So we have an additional health plan, um, and so that's, and she's gonna take on additional duties in addition to the zoning work.
This feels like a silly question.
Yeah.
But I think it should be asked. Is there thirty-five hours a week worth of work in that job?
So it's not.
She's taking on some new duties.
Can you elaborate a little bit?
Um, she's gonna be doing the floodplain management stuff, um, trying, adding on to the, there's a program that we're trying to get involved in, so it lowers.
Yeah.
Insurance premiums.
Yeah, 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 yeah. We need, she definitely puts a balance in.
Yeah, and there's other duties that we can pull and assign to her from.
That takes the weight off of the town office.
Of other, some other employees in the town office. So, there's definitely work for her.
Yeah.
But, but to characterize, I mean, I know we have to have, we only have little buckets on our, on our budget, but when we see it up here and it says zoning administrator, I just, so that's where the, the money's gonna be on that line, but what you're saying is that you're taking a town employee and you're adding duties, they aren't necessarily zoning.
Sort of a reorganization.
Yeah.
We might need to change shop, we're gonna need a new title and a new job description.
Right.
Yes.
Got it.
So, um.
Yeah, rewrite her job description. Yeah.
It's not necessarily that there's more zoning work to be done, it's that there is more work generally and you could assign some of it.
Right.
That she can do.
And there's permit review stuff for the town, for some of these town projects that were.
Yeah, we're just essentially creating a full-time position out of our time position. And I'm all for that, cause I believe there's plenty of work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think, I think Chris was ready to.
I think she does too.
I would, if it was.
Right.
I don't know where you're replacing. Hmm? Any of you guys? Where we would replace any of you guys?
We're, we're irreplaceable.
You are. Shaw your raises.
Danny, go to your room.
Yeah, let me get another cookie for you.
All right.
It's better on screen.
Casey, carry on.
And so then, we have, you know, some other categories that show a pretty big increase, but the dollar amount isn't huge. But the cost of ads has just gone up, so I mean, we're going up forty percent on that, but the dollar amount is seven hundred and fifty dollars. And trying, trying to match it with what we're actually spending.
Yeah.
Um, of course, our paper record is news, a city, News and Citizen, and every time we put in an ad, it seems like every time it's two hundred dollars. It's, it's expensive and it's not just them, it's in general. So, um, there's that. We need to budget for, there's a couple of what, general elections?
So we have.
Like extra election.
President's primary, August primary and the general, so.
So there's extra election expenses that we anticipate.
That'll be three.
So we added to that, um.
Where are the middle ones again?
Presidential primary, August primary and the general election.
What's the August primary?
State.
Thank you.
State?
State.
Why can't we do it all in one day?
Because they don't.
Because, because government is clunky.
Okay.
Unorganized. In Oregon.
All right, all right. Seems like a lot of elections.
There's no reason for it, it's just the way we do it.
Okay, fair enough.
So that's, that's the proposal for that. Any other questions about office or payroll changes? It's all in salaries and benefits, basically.
Kay, is there a really quick question, in a sense, just going back to Eric's comment? And it, it totally makes sense to me to, um, add to Kristen's time. My question is just a moment, Eric's, is that on that list, it does make it look like the zoning administrator is going full-time. So the average voter is not gonna know that that's not going to be filled with zoning time. I'm just wondering if we can explain that in a budget somewhere, or, um, also put it down, just, you know, that change is kinda based on a person. Um, and, you know, hopefully we have Kristen for as long as we possibly can, but it might change in the future. So that kinda sets it, it just historically will make it look like we're having that full-time zoning administrator. So I'm not sure if there's a way we can describe it, or run an asterisk or something for folks who might not know.
Needing a new title for the position and a new job description, so I don't know how quickly we'll come up with that, but-
Or just, or just like zoning administrator, I don't know if we could do zoning administrator slash-
Floodplain manager. That's, she's doing a lot of floodplain management right now.
I'll, I'll also just make an observation that we have, we have places in our budget where we just have a department and it says salaries.
Yeah.
And then here, we have two individual positions-
Right.
That have their own lines.
It's true, because in order to save lines, like highway, police, all these, library, we just lump them together.
Right.
Because of, in order to save space, you put town clerk's office salaries, town manager's, library salaries, you know, police salaries.
For example, why isn't-
Wouldn't they both be under town manager?
Yes, that's my question, thank you.
Both the economic, economic development and the-
The, yeah, we could certainly put them in there, I mean, that would look, that would make that category look cr- like, you know, crazy, but we could, yeah.
Well, it's town office, you know.
But it, but it seems logical.
Well, because those, 'cause they both, um, report to the town manager, so-
So why aren't they in the, yeah.
Right.
I mean, that'll take some explaining at town meeting to say this is why this happened.
But then it'll be done.
Recategorize.
Exactly, it'll be done, and then the next year, it won't look different.
Assistant town manager position in there too, while we're at it.
That's a good reason. Hey, you need a job?
Danny-
No more cookies.
No more cookies?
Assistant town manager.
Okay, so I don't, I, I'm just throwing, throwing that out there, but-
We could definitely move those two right up into town manager, because they're, it's all the same, yeah.
I think originally, I don't know about the zoning administrator, but originally when we added the development coordinator, we added that as its own line item, because we were kinda tracking it. At first, we didn't fill the position, and, you know, it was, we weren't even sure that it was gonna be worthwhile. I think now we're, we're solid in that.
I just wanna go on record as saying I always knew it was gonna be worthwhile.
Okay, so Sherry knew it was gonna be worthwhile, but some of us wanted to track it.
Yeah, I go on record as, Sherry is very good about telling us that she hours.
All right.
All right, so-
As you are as well.
See ya.
What I will say before I get to revenue and budget summary, um, I could only, like, change this out of the folder so many times this week, as I got additional information. So when we get to the next meeting, there'll be additional information, because I already since I put this in the folder two different times, and then I got more information. I didn't wanna keep changing it, but I know that, um, Hardwick Rescue is gonna have an increase. They're gonna be coming next meeting to talk to us.
Is it gonna be as big as their last increase here? No, last time they asked for like twenty or fifty thousand more.
Percentage-wise, it'll be about twenty-three percent more.
Oh my word.
Um, so they're gonna come and talk, Lindsay will come, and so-
They have three hired employees now, before they had one.
Anyway, okay.
Anyway, so, so like that information came in, um, so there's, there's some additions, but right now, let's talk about this, okay.
Now you got my brain way off track, just-
Okay, so revenues.
We're, we're gonna get down to my bright idea here.
Okay, yep, all right, so revenues.
All right, easy now.
Come, pay attention, pay attention.
Um-
I'm with you.
This is good.
There's some pretty significant changes here.
Yeah.
Pilot, which is the payment in lieu of taxes, um, that will be decreasing based on HEB valuations. As you're all aware, I think that, um, there's been some, I don't know, discovery in the calculations of that. Um, and so based on that, we will be receiving less money from them. Um, we got less money from them in fiscal year twenty-three, we're getting less money in twenty-four, and we're planning for in twenty-five. Um-
So, so that's just the way it is?
It's a pretty big hit, twenty-one thousand dollars.
It's by statu-, it's by statute, it's, we, so no, we've-
We agreed.
We agreed on it. We don't have to, we can pretty much-
We could change it, but what we agreed was that we would, we would accept, as I recall, that we agreed that we would accept pilot from Hartig Electric as if, uh, we didn't own them, essentially, as if that they were, um, municipal-
Like a municipal outside of their boundary.
Right.
Right, I remember that.
So that's what we agreed to, and then this cap, this is where the calculation lands. It seemed like the most fair way to do it.
Okay, um-
Easily defendable, I'd like to say.
Delinquent charges, um, in twenty-three, we only collected eighteen thousand, which means people are paying their stuff on time, which is good.
That is good.
It does reduce our revenue, but, um, it also, you know, means we're collecting more of the taxes on time. So basically just lowered that based on what we received in twenty-three, that we shouldn't expect to go all the way up to twenty-seven again. So kind of middle ground there. Um, recording fees, again, sort of aligning with what we've seen recently. Um, grant and aid revenue, we already know what those figures are, so in fiscal year twenty-four, we, it was like thirty-one, and then weeks, that's gonna go down. It's a different amount every year. Um, oh, whoops, I didn't go that far, sorry. Get up there. Grant and aid revenue, we, we already know what that amount is, so that, that will be less.
Oh wait, so, sorry, and that's, um, highway?
Yes.
And why, you probably just said this, but why is it lower?
Because it's a grant, and they, we already have the grant, like, we already know that the amount is lower, what we're gonna, we already know what we're gonna receive.
Hey.
Okay.
It varies from year to year based on the pot of money that they have.
Ah.
Yeah.
That's wrong. Six thousand.
When do we talk about it, though?
Talk about it right now. That should be six thousand, Casey.
What?
The West Woodbury. Good, that helps.
We paid three thousand for a half a year.
So I, I advocated-
That was only for half a year?
Get that mess up and running and ask Ope to go to, make a deal to take care of West Woodbury, um, you know, for Woodbury so they didn't have to come around. Um, and, and Ope did just exactly as I was adamant about doing. Unfortunately, after, now that we've done it a year, it, I, I don't believe that, the, the money's not enough. So what we're getting isn't enough, six thousand isn't enough.
You don't think that covers our expense?
No, it's near, no. And, and I didn't, I did not, I wasn't involved in the actual negotiation of the price.
Hmm.
I mean, at one point, we were trading stuff originally, right?
Yet they were hauling sand for us in the summer.
Originally, it was a buyer, yeah.
And then they stopped.
So it needs to be relooked at, like, I guess is what, would you say that's fair, it needs to be renegotiated, what do you think? You'd be, what, I'll be?
No, not, I'm just waiting for you to go down talking.
I'm not sure what we do for the, what are we doing, we're-
So-
Plowing?
Yeah, so if you go up, if you go up Kate Brook Road, um, and then you get up to West Woodbury-
Six miles of road, three roads.
And, and the town of Woodbury has no direct access from Woodbury without coming through Hardwick to get to those roads.
Okay, okay.
And so we plow and grade them, and we used to just, they used to come down and help haul winter sand.
Mm-hmm.
And, um-
Now we don't need them to do that.
Well, no, they, they stopped doing it.
And then, well, originally, I believe that was, the buyer was to switch to their brush cutter that goes on their loader. Then that failed, so a couple of years, nothing happened.
Yeah.
Um, so then, I believe we stopped doing it, correctly?
Well, they, they didn't come through with the-
They didn't come through, they're in a deal, so we stopped doing it. So then I asked Ope when he first added to, and they had a new town guy to see if we could get back together. They did, unfortunately, the deal that was brokered is not sufficient, we're not covering our costs. So we need to either renegotiate a deal with them or stop doing it.
So that six thousand covers both summer grading and winter plowing?
Just one grading.
Oh.
But still, I mean, I don't believe-
But as much plowing as they need, okay?
Right, and I, and I don't think that's sufficient, six thousand's sufficient to cover the cost.
What do you think would be sufficient?
Um-
Or do, how would we determine?
I would have to know, need a lot more.
I figured it to be between twelve and eighteen thousand.
Yeah, I would say, if I, I was a contractor, I would say-
Based on like the percentage of road that is compared to overall?
We did-
I would say that's still pretty light.
We ran the numbers, we ran the old, like, material overtime, truck time, loading-
Yeah.
Wear and tear on the trucks.
Yeah.
And I just still say, I think that number's still funny, so, I think I still have a good deal for them.
Hurley is keeping track, as he has, but he's keeping better track of West Woodbury and what he's doing there.
Okay.
So-
Oh, that's his route?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm gonna revisit it, but I have, they are doing their budgeting right now, so I, they were, they're gonna pay the six thousand.
For the year we're in, yeah.
And they're budgeting right now, so it's-
A good time to ask them.
I-
Do we have a signed contract that we have to wait?
It's an agreement, it's a mutual aid agreement.
Okay, so, but something we could change, sort of on short notice, as opposed to we have a three-year contract?
It's annual.
It's annual.
Yep. Um, but I went to the select board shortly after I started, I presented the numbers that I came up with. I presented the tax revenue that I thought that they took in-
From those properties?
From those, from the year-round properties, and then I, they didn't wanna pay, so we stopped doing it. And then I was directed to negotiate with the new town road commissioner, and this is what we came up with.
So at the time, that was the best you could get?
Well, it was a good faith to try to make things.
Yeah, make it, get, make it.
They were doing it halfway through the winter, and he came and said, like, I can't, we can't keep doing it. So, um, they were in a jam, and this is what we came up with.
So, but it needs to be revisited now, but I think we need to, if they're budgeting next, we're doing it this year, but it needs to be, not done next year without, under a deal.
Well, but I think-
So who does that, him or us?
I've done it once.
I know, I don't care, I, I, I just, I mean, it's not so, it's costing the taxpayers money right now to do that, and that's not right. So it needs to be fixed.
Well, it's-
So however we fix it, it's fine, either we give up, it's fair compensation, which I agree his number is, um, more than fair, I'm sure that, given the cost of things.
Well, if they had to hire a private contractor, it would be-
Yeah.
Quite a bit.
Yeah, it'd be a lot more than that.
But we're out there, we're going up the hill, I mean-
Yeah.
Right, so our cost should be lower, 'cause we're already there.
Well, yeah, and I, I, that, the whole, my whole push to do this was to be a good neighbor, and there's no reason why we can't. But we're also not gonna do it and lose money, we can't.
And it's not fair to people hardworking.
It's my fairness, people have, so, we need to relook at it.
So is this something you'd be willing to go with Ope to?
I would go with Ope, if Ope wants me to go.
I don't know who you're going to, are you going to the select board or the road foreman, or?
I'll talk, we'll, we'll talk to Alfie.
We should talk to Alfie and see what else.
Okay, all right, so you guys will work on that. Seems like timing is gonna be a little tight, 'cause like, just like us, they're gonna be trying to get their budget done by January.
Part of, part of the responsibility, listen, you know, the bottom line is, it's the town of Woodbury.
Yeah.
They should be the ones concerned with who's taking care of the roads, you know what I mean? So, yeah, they should make sure that the deal's in place to get it done in next year.
Yeah.
If it was me, I would wanna make sure my plow guy was, sure.
Yeah, yeah.
He is, this winter.
Well, right, but you understand.
Next winter too. No, I hear ya, you're right.
Well, we could give them three thousand dollars worth of service.
Six, it's six.
Six.
It's six.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's there, yeah, and that's not, you know-
That was for half a year.
She's updated it on, right.
Yeah.
The whole goal, like, you know, the whole idea, that, my whole deal here is to, to be a good thing, and there's no reason why it can't be a good thing, but it needs to be a fair thing for-
Right.
For everyone involved.
Totally.
Simple, all right, Ope and I are on it.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Next.
I'm not changing it right now on this, because-
She was highlighting it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Leave it there.
Yes, um, okay, so, um-
I think you should leave it as six, though, because if that's what was negotiated, like, that's what we're doing this year, is six thousand?
Yeah.
I think even if it was highlighted, it's gotta be at least six.
Right, but I'm saying I, I don't wanna change it, because then it will change your revenue, I don't wanna do it right now. I highlight it so that I'll change it in my version, but I don't wanna do it now, because then it's gonna change all your figures on the next screen, yeah. So I'll go back to it, um, okay, so there's that, copying fees, I aligned with actual, um, same thing with PD ticket revenue, um, based on kind of what we're seeing. Um, interest on investments, again, what we're, kind of what we're seeing there, water and sewer transfers, those come from the salaries of highway and office, the, like, the admin fees that come over, um, and highway state, state, uh, state highway safety grants, excuse me, again. We had taken in like sixteen thousand in fiscal year twenty-three, so we expect to continue those, um, so we did-
Please scroll again for me, Casey.
Oh, yes, sorry.
It's easier for me to follow on.
Yeah, um, right here, so a little increase that, based on what we've got. Um, and then we have the VAS patrol that we haven't budgeted for, but we anticipate that to continue, is that correct, Mike?
Yeah, I gave it, did I give you the money, or did?
Well, this is for next year, but, um, I don't, no, I don't have the figure, I don't think, for that, but we're getting this year, but that's great, can use some this year.
So, but you anticipate that will continue?
This is next year's budget.
Yeah, this is twenty-five, so, we don't have anything in the current, because we didn't know about it, like, at the time we were budgeting, so, yeah, um-
But I mean, we pretty much get reimbursed for everything in there.
Yeah.
So we wouldn't anticipate that to end after this winter?
No.
Okay.
Well.
I mean, I know you can't see in the future, but you don't have a reason to believe right now.
I don't have any reason to believe.
They, they, they like it, 'cause this, this area of the trail is not really covered.
Okay.
Um, we had the one-time ARPA funds that, that will go away in twenty-five, so whatever, what we had left was the ninety-nine hundred, which we're using in the current year.
Yeah.
Um, and then sale of real estate, um, this is something we're throwing out there-
Oh.
Um, about the possibility of selling Carey Road.
Do we have a buyer?
Well, not right now, we haven't even listed it or anything, but-
I'll buy after a hundred and fifty.
Um, Ope and I talked about this.
The Halliers one, they, they offered to buy it, kind of.
So we, we threw that number in there, I don't know if it's too, I don't know if it's low, I don't know if it's high, um-
It's like a placeholder.
Yeah, like, we're, we don't really have a need for it right now, we know it's probably not gonna work for a highway garage.
Million for Dollar General? Hmm? Did they pay something stupid, like-
No.
Five hundred thousand or something? Three hundred thousand. Well, that's still-
Right, this is the rest of the property.
Yeah, I was gonna say, this is the other eleven acres, not that one.
What about those people from St. Johnsbury who came and pitched-
He moved away.
The housing.
Moved away.
Doing business in Vermont was too hard and too costly, costly for him.
Yeah.
So he went to the Southern Estates.
Wow.
The best.
Yep.
I believe that.
So, basically, this property is a property that we had originally thought would hold, um, well, we originally didn't intend to buy it, it just, we bought it at tax sale, because it was our policy to bid on things that nobody else bid on.
Still has our stuff.
Still our policy, so, so we ended up owning it, and then, once we owned it, it seemed like maybe we would put some town buildings down there. But then after the flooding this summer-
So, I, I've still, I think that's premature decision-making.
Okay.
Because I was involved with the flood, and where the town garage was right now was still stranded. Where the fire station was now is still stranded.
Yeah.
No matter where you go, you're gonna be stranded.
Yep.
What was the problem with that?
So, I, I just think that, I, I think it was silly, and that's, and honestly, minor flooding on fourteen-
Yeah.
And the Brook, Ricky Thompson's, I mean, that can be resolved, so it never happened again. So, the flood, the flood is really, in my opinion, no consideration for not doing that down there.
Okay.
You know what I mean? Because no matter where we put stuff, there's gonna be limitations.
Yep.
But-
But, so, i- is that, are you gonna extend that and say that, that's an argument for holding on to that real estate?
Well, I don't think it's, uh, I think it's a valuable piece of real estate, myself.
Right.
I think it's, it's, the way the lay of the land is in the town of Hardwick is, expansion is very limited.
Yeah.
So I just hate to see us write it off because of that flood, and that, to that point, it was, it was a hell of an idea. And then the flood hit, and there was a foot of water out on fourteen, and then my whole world went down, you know, um, so.
Could I also add, just that, I mean, even if we sold, even if we sold that real estate, which potentially could be really great, I don't feel comfortable putting it into our budget as revenue for next year, like, there's way too many variables around that.
It certainly won't be, I don't believe it'd be sold in a year, I-
You don't think so?
I just don't think we should bank on that hundred and fifty grand as revenue, because we don't have any, like, we don't have an offer, we don't even have an, like, there are way too many questions, I think, to say that, if we have to cut something somewhere, we should do that, but I-
Do we need to do that?
It seems like we, we would have to, we would have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar shortfall if we didn't spend it, if we didn't sell it next year, which would be a problem.
As well as incentive to, to pressure, or pressure to sell it.
It would be, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I shouldn't have it, I'm not gonna do it.
It is why it's there, like, it's, it was really more for discussion, it was more for discussion, like-
I wanted to, I knew it'd be an hour, a little over an hour left in the meet, or through the meeting, and I wanted to spark it up, so everybody would wake up.
I mean, I'm not, I, to my point, okay, so I may make my point for keeping it, but I'm also not against selling it either, I just don't think we're gonna be ready in a year.
But it falls into the need for a meeting at some point, after we've gotten this budget done, and we're, where we actually just focus on the state, public safety and that complex, and where it is, whether it's there, whether it's there, whether it's somewhere else. Um, we, we are never gonna do that in a regular meeting.
So, no, so, yeah, I agree, so the real question is where, our thoughts right now, would you say that we all agree that, the only use that we would have down there would be the public safety mill, otherwise we would all, we would let sell it. Is that fair?
That's true for me.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Is if, if we're not gonna do it for that, then sell it.
Right, because then it would improve our rent list.
But I don't know, I'm still not convinced that we have a better place for a facility yet, so we need to get our stuff together.
Well, okay, so, I don't, I think we're gonna end up having a fire station up here, and why not build one building for all of our assets? And we could sell this, the HED is looking for a piece of property for their shop, because they were, um, basically, uh, surrounded by a moat during the flood. We could offer this property to them for their shop. They've been looking for property to build a new shop. They have.
I know.
And, and other people probably have been looking for places.
You're right.
It sounds like a little agreement that we're, that we're cool with selling it at some point, but just for tonight, it sounds like we're not comfortable putting this down as a hundred and fifty thousand, whatever we, but Sherry's point, we wanna keep having the conversation about what we're, what we're doing with the property.
Right, right. I'm, I'm good with that. I, I'm not comfortable either, um.
Way to reel it in.
Yep, good. Okay, next.
But we do need to get our means in a row on the other side.
Okay, so, just quick little math, backspace. Here's this figure right now, and I'm, I'm gonna delete-
So it's a ten percent on the budget.
And I'm, I'm gonna delete the hundred and fifty thousand.
Oh, you didn't already?
Oh!
No.
Add the three thousand.
Um, hold on.
I thought you did when you did that. It doesn't float?
It should, I wonder.
Eight acres there?
Yep, it did, so.
No, that didn't change though.
Yeah, why is my thing not changing? That did change.
Um, fire department.
Uh, we applied for a grant, Allison Lowe was, for moving the fire department, and that, that was-
Yeah, I got a formula issue here.
Would everything fit?
That's why I asked.
I'll deal with it after, so.
I don't know where that is. Yeah. This was, she didn't come to the meeting, this was just, this was like a couple of months ago, is it? Opie upside.
Yeah.
Allison Lowe talked to us a couple of months ago about doing that, did it end tap, the grant?
Yeah.
For, and you, she was gonna apply for-
Mitigation grants.
And mitigate, and we were gonna look at moving the fire department up on Creamery Road, and as part of that, say, well, we have to reconfigure everything, because we also need to new town garage. Do you know where any of that stands, like, the grant?
I haven't talked to Allison.
I, I talk to her almost all the time, I'll ask her.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I haven't talked to her about that.
Right.
All right.
I'll find out. So we did, I believe, though, we applied for funding to do a study on moving the fire department up there, which would also look at what the possibility of there being Creamery Road, what the configuration would be of the fire department, new town garage up there.
Hardwick Rescue, that's a piece of the action, too.
Yeah.
Right, and we told them that we do.
We tried for a name, we couldn't.
Oh, so we went from just under ten percent to just under fourteen percent.
Average.
And this, of course, doesn't include, this doesn't include the new information I've received, like, from Hardwick Rescue and stuff, so-
Right, so at first glance, it's pretty brutal.
I think we'll be edging up to fifteen percent.
So I guess one other note I'll make about, like, personally, I wouldn't have a problem budgeting, um, money for selling the Cary Road property if we all, were all in agreement that we were gonna try to sell it this year, I bet we could sell it in a year.
Well, this gives us until June thirtieth of twenty-five to sell it, yeah.
However, that's a one-time revenue shock, and so, in some ways, counting, I mean, it's good, but it kicks can down-
Camouflage.
Yeah, camouflage is the real issue.
Yeah, I just, I don't think that.
Right, 'cause you're not, then we're just not gonna have that, it's gonna happen once, and then we're not gonna have it anymore.
It's not gonna solve any issues, it's still a roll of the dice, we're nowhere near, you're not, you know, you're gonna argue with me a little bit about what you sell that for, or-
Yeah, maybe.
I ain't giving it to nobody.
Right.
Give it to anybody, we give it to Danny Hale.
Oh my god.
Here we go.
I'm telling you. Anybody, the only thing we've had so far is we've got two people come here and ask for it for free.
Make sure that's in the-
That's all we've had. No one's come through that door and said anything other than, I'll take the land for free, and I'll do this, well, Danny Hale will take the land for free.
Well, what we had into it.
So-
What we had into it.
We can list it with a realtor and see what we can get.
Remember when you came to us, said, just two hundred thousand dollars for the yellow barn, and in a year, we'll get our money back.
Yeah, yeah, just a year. However, many years?
Our real estate ventures are going very well.
Right, well, we do own that.
We do own it, it's coming along, we didn't see that, it's looking good.
Um, so that's brutal, thirteen point nine percent. Okay.
But, so we could, uh, you know, I just don't think I, I just, we don't have any plan to sell that thing, and it's, it's gonna come hard, and-
No, it's-
We've already agreed, we're gonna get to have public, public conversations about it.
Yeah, if there's a developer approaches this town, or something like that, and comes to windfall, it's not, it shouldn't be like that.
Windfall's a much better word, Sherry. So, then we, then we can cut the taxes, then we can cut the tax rate. That year, 'cause you know what? Next year's, yeah, but what I'm saying is, is you think the tax rate's gonna be different in twenty twenty-six.
It's not, yeah, ouchy, ouchy, ouchy.
Yeah, I just like I said.
So we didn't get hit that hard last year with our budget, and we kept reading in the papers of all these other towns around us that had these huge increases.
Like thirty percent and stuff, yeah.
Yeah, and so somehow-
So what's, what's driving this big?
We're gonna have to-
Capital set aside is a big one, like, our, our line items is a big, a big thing, I think, um.
Yeah, because we're, and we have some bonds that are coming due for the-
Like, payments, payments that are, like, a new payment, that increase and set aside for capital, like, having to do a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for equipment, if we wanna keep our schedule, that's a big one.
Yeah.
Yeah, get around the payments, really.
So we have to start not replacing some stuff like the old days.
Okay, so, we also, as Casey has pointed out, we just don't have all the information in, it's still evolving, so we're not, I don't think we're solving anything tonight, we're just looking at where we're at, this is a proposal.
And the next meeting will have library and recreation, which are the only two departments that have not presented. Um, and then I also will, um, like, insurance has just got, has just come in from the LCT, which-
Is the library gonna come with a solid update on the?
On the building project?
No, well, not, yeah, the money handed to the building project.
I, I don't know that.
You know what I'm saying, where, where's, uh?
Yeah, we could probably get another update.
I mean, so for the yellow, essentially, the yellow barn project is gonna never be a taxpayer test.
Correct.
Library, on the other hand-
Always has been.
Always will be a taxpayer test, so, we have, we should, we should be, I think, we should, it's gotta be a huge cost overruns. It's been, it's been under construction somewhere, and it's, they're not even above the ground yet, so.
Well, but they weren't under construction all summer, they stopped.
They were redesigning, yeah, trust me, there, there was parts moving the whole time. There was dollar bills going ching ching the whole time, it may not have been the shovel, but it was, it was an architect or-
The redesigning, yeah.
It was somebody, the project was moving, the project is under construction, um, people paid for things, people have done where, social, you know.
But-
I don't know where it's at at all, does anyone have any idea?
So, my understanding, from just a personal conversation with Joey, which maybe isn't up to date, 'cause it's been a while, but is that they are basically planning to do what they can with the money they have, and they're confident they can at least complete the shell. They might not be able to fit out all the parts of the new building, but they're still looking for funding to do that. So that, I have not heard any inkling of a plan to come back to us to ask for anything, they've already received a bond from the town. So I think-
They've received a bond from the taxpayers with the expectation that they've completed library.
Correct.
Can I just make a couple really quick comments, it's not the library now?
Yes.
Um, I'm just thinking, it'd be nice, obviously, we don't wanna be, like, thirteen percent's a lot. It would be nice if we, I mean, it seems like for Hardwick to get it below ten, but ten seems a little more swappable than almost fourteen percent. Um, and my other question is, do we have time to get, like, a quick assessment for a realtor for the Cary Road property, so that way we could, you know, have some actual numbers for that? I know it's tight, uh, 'cause we have to get it published, but it would just be nice to have an opinion of somebody who, a developer or something.
So, the problem, though, Kaylee, I, as I see it, is that even if we put that revenue in there this year, that's a one-year windfall. So it's gonna bite us next year.
Right, yeah, you're right.
So, unless, you know, we have more property somewhere.
Can't really budget it. I was asked what we would, what the town would sell the, um, lot at the end of the, at Mill and Main, the end of the Quiktoy building, um, for, RJ asked me that.
Oh, really? Interesting. The guy looking to build a, their, the organization looking to build a hostel in Hardwick for vicars?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two laps, town, two laps.
I know we want to build our hostel where they're equal.
It's a hostel.
Hostel is like a-
Donkeys hang out?
Um, in my experience, but I don't know.
It's accommodations for people who are-
Well, Vermont hot's called, uh, uh, a resort that houses eighteen people with running water and sewer, a hot, too, so. That's why, it's not a hot, it's a camp for most of them, it's not a hut.
Yeah.
Those minimum accommodations.
Yeah.
It's accommodations.
So, they play football, too.
Let's reel this back in for a second, so, just, we're still gonna hear from library, rec, rescue?
Right, yes.
So, we, that'll kinda complete, and you're still, you said you just got insurance info?
Insurance info, so then I'll know, like, I know passives going up two point nine percent, I think, um, but I think unemployment was pretty stable, or really tiny increase workers' comp.
Would you say definitely the rescue's going up?
Mm-hmm, yeah, I've, I've got the figure already, it's a twenty-three percent increase.
So-
And that's not in here right now.
So I think there's not a lot of point tonight of trying to hammer out what's happening.
Yeah, we're not going to tonight, we need to get our last two departments, finish up, because we'll be closer to having all of the information we need at the next meeting.
And then we'll really know where, where we're starting from.
Yes, where, yeah, and start thinking about where you wanna make cuts.
Casey, I see that you're suggesting a, a contribution out of the fund balance. There's been so much, the fund balance this, the fund balance that, I wonder if you could pull together just the state of the fund balance.
Sure, um, well, I can tell you that we used two hundred and sixty thousand of it in fiscal year twenty-three. We anticipated using a hundred and seventy-five, and we used two sixty.
And where does it stand?
Um, I gotta just, I, I haven't got the new number memorized, give me one sec.
Well, I don't need to have it right now, but, but, for this conversation next time, it would be useful if we had that.
About eight eighty, and that includes the hundred thousand dollar commitment to the pedestrian bridge, um, and that would be, so eight eighty, roughly, eight eighty, and then we have seventy-five thousand of that budgeted for the current year we're in, so eight hundred. And then fifty proposed here, seven fifty.
Well, I could tell you, I would rather, I, I feel more comfortable about putting a hundred and fifty thousand of that in the budget than I would putting real estate in the budget.
Than putting what, I'm sorry?
And they, the auditors want it to be at what percentage?
Sixteen percent.
I thought it was between thirteen and fifty.
Um, I, it's in our policy, um, our goal is fifteen or, I think it's fifteen or twenty, it's fifteen or twenty percent. Of course, that amount rises now as our budget goes out.
So fifteen percent of our budget is our target?
Mm-hmm.
And we're at four million?
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah, so.
So, uh-
Six hundred thousand?
Six hundred, yep.
So we have a hundred thousand.
I'm, I'm a lot more comfortable with putting a hundred and fifty of that in there, and if we get the real estate-
Casey's already got fifty in that, in this, right, of revenue from the fund balance?
No, seventy-five.
Yeah.
Fifty.
In the summaries in this last sheet, she's suggesting.
Fifty?
Fifty.
Because, as a member, we talked about gradually going down, because we did a hundred and seventy-five, and then we did, like, a hundred and twenty-five, and then we did seventy, like, we've just been gradually going down, so that it wasn't so painful.
Yep.
And that's, that's why it's only fifty this year. I think it was a hundred and twenty-five last year, so we're weaning off of that.
Right.
'Cause we needed to draw it down some, 'cause it was getting really high, um, but, yeah, we're leaning towards that.
Yeah, we can see where we're at.
I mean, our offices are pretty slim.
Yep, none of them are gonna be wonderful, I agree.
There's no magic bullet.
I'm gonna have to sign off to, to go jump on a toddler to eat.
Okay, thanks, Kaylee.
Thanks, everybody, thank you.
Thanks.
So does she.
Bye, goodnight.
So, and then, the next one?
The next meeting?
So I do, I do ask the library to officially come with some sort of explanation. So could you make sure that the library comes with some sort of information that'll make me comfortable in feeling, feeling comfortable in understanding the financial status of their project? understanding the financial status of their project?
Um, I know they're applying for another nine hundred thousand dollar grant or something like that.
So I'll listen to what they want to say.
Vermont Department of Labor, I wanna hear. Yeah.
This is, this is where we're at. This is what we got left.
Yep.
Cause ultimately, this is, again, like I said earlier, this is, this is a project that the taxpayers are on note for ultimately, so. We should have better awareness of where it's at.
Yep.
For all the naysayers right now, and there are a few on that project, they're pretty full of themselves, so.
At some point, they have to realize that it's happening.
I, I'm with you and I'm not trying to be negative.
No, I know.
You understand that.
To be a naysayer when the project is moving forward is like counterproductive in my eyes.
Well, right. I, I, I agree, but you gotta understand, not everyone agrees.
Well, and I think last time Jody was here, something happened and you were not here, so you weren't here to ask the questions.
That's true. She did some.
Yeah.
She was here, I, I heard.
Didn't mean it, then you were.
Yeah, but I, I was here.
Okay.
More numbers. More cowbell. More cowbell.
Anyway.
I wanna hear.
Goes to eleven.
Well, I, I don't have any idea. I haven't, no one knows. They're not like, I think the public's been making.
But they are applying, they are applying for more money. Did that Vermont library's grant open up, do you know?
Uh, that's what they're waiting for.
Okay.
They had a meeting with them earlier this week. I haven't heard the results for that, but.
The other question I have about the rec budget is, do they have a paid staff member in the rec committee? What exactly is that all about?
I think that's a great question. I, I'd be curious to know that too.
I mean, we have some very dedicated committee people in this town.
Volunteers.
Volunteers, absolutely, for decades that have done stellar, stellar work. We could, we could, you know, really.
Right.
Um, but the trails people.
We do, trails has a paid, one paid partial, I can tell you exactly what he does.
But they're, they're. Right, exactly. That's, so my, my point is, I think the rec committee could function better with, for example, paying somebody to shovel, he's getting wrecked, than paying somebody to administer something.
Yeah.
So I, I don't know. I think they all came about when it was tied into the reach.
I can answer that. I don't know.
It's mostly administrative duties, the summer swim program.
Do what? But what, I, I mean.
Communicating with the swim instructor and, and then there's the planning around the, I mean, I don't know. I, I mean, I do know, but I, I don't know why the position became a paid position.
I don't know when it, do you, I don't know when it was because it's been as long as I've been here. At least five years.
Do you know how much?
Well, it's like.
Ten hours.
Do you know how much it is?
At least five years.
Like dollars or not? I don't even.
It's like forty, forty-five hundred.
Seemed to recall.
That's been about the five of us, yeah.
It's pretty.
Yeah.
Fairly recent.
And it's about the same.
I think the budget, I think the budget is about five, but it's only been about, it's probably only actually been about thirty-five hundred.
We're getting about the same.
Yeah, the results are the same. I just.
Casey just answered your question.
What's that?
I said, I think the budget's around five, but for the last few years, it's run anywhere from three thousand to thirty-five hundred of actual expense.
Yeah, I remember it been a little less.
Yeah.
But, and I think some of it might have been tied in when they weren't reach and.
Yes.
They were tied together with what's her name? The girl that was here, remember the younger girl? But anyway, doesn't matter, um, just try to, try to figure out if, if, A, if we're paying someone, there should be a job description and there's gotta be a way.
Rec, rec is going over their budget on the twenty-first and then they're gonna be here, or the next week and then they're gonna be here on the twenty-first.
Yeah, they're going over tonight.
Yeah, tonight.
Okay.
So that, yeah, so they should know that.
So they should know.
No, they leave the twelfth next Tuesday.
Can you just, uh, maybe drop them a note that I'm gonna be looking for a.
Explanation of where that position is.
More cowbell for the.
Well, you're making five grand and I'm making a grand. Cause we don't do much administering here.
Um, I'm gonna move us, speaking of administering, I'm gonna move us along.
We got more?
We got more. Item four is, uh, select board to, uh, and first, thank you, Casey.
Thank you.
It's actually, it's gonna be item three though, because.
Huh?
It's item three, not item four, because we did away with one.
Oh, right. Item three, we deleted two.
You can thank me too. I came up with that hundred and fifty dollar state sale.
I make a motion that we approve the amendment to the S E group contract to include the engineering design of the pedestrian bridge structure and authorized town manager David Upson Jr. to sign the amendment.
Wait a second.
Second.
So I have, I have some questions. Sorry.
Yeah, I read, I read through that stuff.
This is really just to include the, the bridge.
Bridge brothers.
Does, Bridge Brothers design of, like the engineering and design of the bridge.
Which we needed in order to get the USDA approval, but we couldn't get the design until we went out to bid with the three contractors, but we couldn't go out to the three contractors because we only had one place that would do the design, et cetera, et cetera.
All right.
This is.
So it's just a.
Okay, so this is a necessary step.
This is, this is all unnecessary, but it's necessary.
An absolutely necessary step to keep moving forward. Yeah.
Cause how are we moving forward? I would just note.
This could be between this.
This is pivotal.
The P F A R, or the P A F R and the M O U, those three documents.
Pivotal.
Could be, could be really big, really big.
Our, 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 what do you call it? A turning point, no, uh.
Yeah, turn point. Yeah.
Yeah, and, and then things will start, then the permitting starts, stuff really starts to happen.
And then we're, it's gonna go out to bid and.
Right.
So can I just note that then for the record, I just wanna note my, my, I think three, huh, just say it. So it's a lot of money?
Yeah.
As a percentage of the, as a percentage of the construction cost?
Did you see the new, the new numbers for the bridge?
No.
Should probably see those.
Okay, I'd like to see those. I didn't, so if you could distribute those, that'd be great. Um, but just even as a percentage of the construction, it seems like a lot. It also seems like we've had them in our employ for a long time and we haven't gone very far.
I have nothing good to say about S E group construction, right?
I noted in the contract that it, that we don't own any of the designs. They retain ownership of the designs, so if we ever sever our relationship with them, the designs stay with them, not with us, even if we've bought them. Also, the, the contract doesn't cover geotech. It didn't look like.
We believe for that.
Okay, so it's done. Okay, good.
We own that.
Okay, good. That was my other, I'm like, oh, boy. Good. Excellent. So anyway, those are my concerns, but, um. But if, if, if you're, if you guys are saying that by moving this forward, we're, that's a necessary step to getting this bridge done next year, then, um.
Tipping point.
A tipping point. So then, uh, I'm gonna say.
The bridge were a seesaw.
Oh, or swinging.
So I, I'm all about if this is it, god dang it.
I know, it's been a long road.
And I, I know what you're saying.
Nothing gets to be less.
We use S E group.
Yeah.
We use them for a drill project, a bunch of stuff, ended up in the same thing.
Yep.
Oh, Renata.
Well, there was, there's nobody else out there.
Thanks for telling us.
Sorry. Well, no, but.
This project is on a mysterious way of.
We, we started with a wonderful architect and that their timing was bad.
It just wasn't bad. So anyway.
Anyway.
Do it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you.
Damn it, hurt.
Okay, next is the, uh, item four, select board to consider adopting the town's updated all hazards mitigation plan. This is another thing we have to do, right?
I make a motion to be adopted, town's updated all hazard mitigation plan.
Second.
So as in, in discussion, I'll just note that there are many, many, many errors and typos in this.
All right, one that's not adopted.
Really?
Is there, is there any downside to not adopting it until it's fixed?
Like are we under a deadline here?
No, because there's other communities, I mean.
I take my motion back.
We can do it next.
No, we can, we can vote it down.
We can do it next. We can do it next. Pending, you can do it pending.
Pending typo correction.
Oh, but, oh gosh, I don't wanna be the one, I don't, no.
Yeah, don't do it. Don't do it. Just wait, we'll do it, we'll put it on the next.
Whoa, whoa.
So, so do you, so do you wanna withdraw your motion?
We table it.
Danny wants to. The guy that was here.
I'm gonna withdraw the whole, no, I don't.
So there's a lot of detail in there. I, I have to admit, it's a long document. I did not read every word. I did read some words. And I have to say that, for example, I am fairly certain that the town bordering Hardwick to the southeast is not Hardwick.
It might be.
It's Hardwick.
Oh.
Oh, that's not.
And there are a couple other, you know, things along those lines.
Yep.
But I really don't wanna be the one to do the proofreading either.
I'll do it.
Okay, really?
Yep. I'll, I'll do it, the guy we paid to do it.
That's a great idea.
The first guy.
Um, they're also inconsistent.
Where'd your system go?
More cowbell.
Yeah. There are inconsistencies in the number of dams listed in different sections. There are.
Okay. Oh, you did your.
I was gonna say for a bit, but.
We planted all those errors and then you thought.
Just to see if somebody would read it?
Yep.
Well, and it was also approved by the S A T too, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That doesn't say, that's not saying much.
They have Hardwick Lake as our, as our.
They're, they're also, I'm pretty sure, I didn't dream this, but I was reading, I'm pretty sure it, it had listed Hardwick as on, like.
The center for the universe?
Almost. The, the, on the, um, on the boundary of one of the reservoirs of the Connecticut River, like behind one of the dams in Connecticut.
Or a dam.
Yeah, exactly. There're just things like that, but I don't know that these things matter.
I could ask Kristin.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah, they do.
Do we really have an executive session?
No, you're probably right. They probably don't. Yeah.
Yeah. Have you ever noticed that Google Maps has at least one road that doesn't exist in the village of Hardwick consistently?
Nice. All right, so sorry about that with the.
Don't be sorry. This is important. You did, you, you did your job.
So we're gonna move it to next town?
I read the thing.
Yeah, you're good. No worries. We'll just table it, table it.
All right.
All in favor?
All right, table, there we go. Select board reports. Make them snappy.
The bid, uh, what do you said? The R P for the townhouse project is posted. It's open until.
No, it's a request for bids.
Request for bids.
Yeah.
Nice.
Until December nineteenth.
Yep.
Have you been able to put it out to the place, the different contractors that you and Jamie were?
Yep.
Yeah.
Our calendars. Can you skip our calendar?
So we're hopeful that we're gonna get a contractor for that project.
That'd be awesome.
And the Hardwick Downtown Partnership is in the process of interviewing. We have four applicants for our executive director position.
Oh, wow, that's good. Nice.
Damn, I just did that on it.
Yep, you did.
Yeah. I'll report Yellow Barn Construction is ongoing.
Excuse me.
If anybody wants a, if anybody wants a more, uh, personal tour, let me know.
They're gonna pour concrete this week, right?
And next week.
It's gonna be warm again. They're gonna continue.
I finished the wall, uh, the, the, yeah, the foundation wall on the east side is the one that's not done. Then they're gonna erect the steel building, then they're gonna heat it, then they're gonna put a slab.
Yep, that's where they do it.
Yeah.
It's hopefully for that little red diagram where they need it.
Wow. Any other reports? New business, old business? Motion to go into executive session pursuant to one V S A three thirteen for a personnel matter.
So moved. Second.
Nobody's really getting it.
All in favor, please say aye.
Hey, wait a minute. Is Mr. Upson coming over there?
To include the town manager?
Can't be it.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye.